Call this school board meeting to order for August 25, 2021 at 5:00 PM. Let the record reflect that all school board members are present with the exception of school board member Truman. And with that, I'd like to invite all of you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, really, really quick. Sarah is actually going to be just a few minutes late, but she will be here.
Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance is live. The United States of America. The three hours of the year. One nation under God. Three nations of the Lord.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item three of the agenda, approval of school board meeting minutes dated August 11, 2021. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member Richard.
I move we approve the school board committee meeting minutes dated August 11, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by school board member La Fortune. Any discussion? Roll call vote on the minutes. School Board Member Shay.
Yes.
School Board Member Preble.
Yes.
School Board Member Richard.
Yes.
School Board Member La Fortune.
Yes.
And school board member Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Brings us to item four. Any adjustments to the agenda at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member La Fortune.
I move we add under executive session, item B, executive session for the purpose of labor contract negotiations.
Motion's been made by school board member La Fortune. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by school board member Shay. Any discussion? Roll call vote, school board member Shay.
Yes.
School Board Member Preble.
Yes.
School Board Member Richard.
Yes.
School Board Member La Fortune.
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member Shay.
We have another adjustment to the agenda. To add, add a motion to allow the superintendent to accept a security access bid. And I'd like to add it to G under new business.
Motion to allow superintendent to accept.
A security access bid for our school buildings.
Motion's been made by school board member Shay. Is there a second? Second by school board member Johnston. Any discussion? Roll call vote, school board member Shay.
Yes.
School Board Member Preble.
Yes.
School Board Member Richard.
Yes.
School Board Member La Fortune.
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Any further adjustments to the agenda? Seeing no further adjustments, moving on. Item five, correspondence. Any correspondence this evening? See no correspondence. Moving on to item six, public session. There's members of the public that wish to speak. Please come forward and be heard.
Hi. Thanks for coming out tonight. It's great to see everyone. I am so excited for school to start and for every, all the kids to be back in the classroom. Tonight I wanted to remind you of some campaign promises you all made.
Please remember to state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Anna McCard, 533 Buxton Road. The first one is a balanced budget. You guys have done a great job and you've really delivered. And there's been a lot of transparency regarding where the money's going and how it's being spent. And I'm really happy to see that. The next one is open communication. I would love to have more public input, more workshops. As a consumer of educational services, there is still work to be done. I love that you guys all post on your social media sites about what's going on and with the schools, but I would love to hear more about the decisions that are being made. The meetings are long and they're not always at the best time. So it would be great to get a recap or like a SportsCenter summary of what happened. Additionally, I would love to see Zoom meetings again in addition to the public ones. Right now, my sons are wandering around Fairfield trying to meet their teachers and I had to leave them to come here. It's, that's hard when you're a parent. And regarding communication, the finance agenda, you can look at it and you can look at the details and when it was made and posted. It was made earlier today. So I'm just wondering if you all had time to review it, if it was made a few short hours ago. I know most of you have day jobs and other commitments and things you do. And I think maybe you may need to ask for more time regarding financial information. Also, regarding accountable leadership, you've all promised that and I've seen some great improvements. I'm just still not sure that our schools are top notch. And I'm wondering who keeps school board members accountable and who's actually paying attention to the things that are going on. I'm worried about transparency and if maybe there's things that the public isn't seeing that are going on behind closed doors that should be addressed sooner rather than later. Additionally, you all seem to be a very calm and reserved lot, which is great in a lot of settings. But I remind, I want to remind you that these are our children. My kids are my livelihood. They're my passion, not just my kids, but other kids. And I would love to see a little more passion and maybe intensity. You can be rational and still be excitable and just work it a little more. I don't, I just don't want to seem like I'm seeing you be like slightly apathetic and we can work with that a little bit. You can still be rational and make good decisions and be passionate and concerned. But thank you all for listening and I hope you have a great school year.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Moving on from public comment to item seven of the agenda, superintendent's report. Superintendent Ray.
Good evening. Just a little bit of information for superintendent's report. Just a reminder that CDC has issued a 60-day eviction moratorium on, for families. So if you need any help navigating any of that, or if there are food concerns or clothing concerns or any of those things, please feel free to reach out to us as a school department. One of the problems that we're having right now is bus information and getting everybody to, to give us the information of whether you need bus service or not. I think there was 300 non-return forms on that and it makes it difficult for our bus service to plan for day one if we don't have that information because routes would need to be adjusted or too many of a situation of too many kids wanting to get on the bus or not knowing where to stop. So please help us with that. The same thing for student registration. I know that for some of the student registrations that may have hit spam folders. So just be careful to look into those and that we can get all of those up to date because if we have to close school, we need an updated number in order to, or email address in order to reach you. We still have substituting needs in each of our districts and each of our schools. So if you are interested in substitute teaching or becoming an ed tech, please contact central office and you are welcome to apply. Big shout out to our custodial and maintenance staff as the schools look great. They're getting ready. There's still some moving of things that need to occur in certain places. I think that one of the things is with the amount of humidity that we've had in the last few days, we've seen some places where it's really tough, middle school being one of those. So we just have to keep watching that, but everyone's doing a great job. We're looking forward to fall athletics beginning in our, at our middle school and also hopefully a continuation of that elementary cross country that started a couple of years ago. Probably be a much smaller group this year, but hopefully we can get our kids involved in activities as that's important for them. A reminder to everybody that on August 31st, from 6:00 to 12:00 at Bedford High School, there is another vaccination clinic that's available to students in all communities. And we'll have the Pfizer and the J and J and J and J. No booster shots at that time. We've received a lot of questions on pool testing. So in my newsletter on Friday, we'll have a video with detailed information from our district nurses about what pool testing will look like. It's, it's a good process and we hope that will keep our students in school. It's important to note that individuals who participate in pool testing are exempt from quarantine in the classroom, bus, sports, and other school-related activities if they're identified as a close contact. So as you try to make sure your kiddo can stay involved in a school, pool testing is one of the ways that can do that. And then there will be a piece for parental consent with school-specific codes to register your child for that process and that will be released shortly. And then also, you know, it's important to know that everybody has the access to free breakfast and lunch this year. On the other hand, we still need to make sure that people fill out those forms. So if you're listening at home, please make sure you fill out your forms because that is $1.4 million for revenue for, and subsidy for Saco. So very important for that. And if you fill out those forms, we have some raffles to be automatically entered in, into to receive, we have $500 Hanford gift cards to give out. So please take the time to fill those out at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Super, school board member Shay.
Mr. Superintendent, can you give that date for the Pfizer and J and J again?
August 31st.
From what time?
12:00 to 6:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Moving on to the chair's report, item eight of the agenda. Chair La Fortune?
I have nothing to add tonight.
Moving on, there are no staff reports under item nine, under item 10, board subcommittee meeting minutes. There are no meeting minutes to look at and to review. There is no old business under item 11. Brings us to item 12, new business. Item A, new hires. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member Shay.
I move that we approve the nomination, and let me make sure I've got the right ones. Sorry. I move that we approve the nomination of Stacy Rozak, Burns' third grade teacher, Barry Jackman, Burns' third grade teacher. Stacy Kesvickies, Burns' fifth grade teacher, Gretchen Hanson, Saco Middle School eighth grade teacher, and Samantha Regrose, Saco Middle School sixth grade teacher, and issue a contract for the 2021, 2022 school year. And my apologies if I messed up anyone's name.
Motion's been made by school board member Shay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by school board member Richard. Any discussion? Roll call vote, school board member Shay.
Yes.
School Board Member Preble.
Yes.
School Board Member Richard.
Yes.
School Board Member La Fortune.
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero. Item 10, or excuse me, 12B resignations. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
School Board, school board member La Fortune.
I move we accept the resignation of Kimberly Silva, bus driver, Penny Older, Saco Middle School Ed Tech three, Trista Garrity van driver, Alicia Fisher, Burns Ed Tech two, and Stephanie Atkinson, Saco Middle School Ed Tech.
Motion's been made by school board member La Fortune. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by school board member Johnston. Any discussion? Roll call vote, school board member Shay.
Yes.
School Board Member Preble.
Yes.
School Board Member Richard.
Yes.
School Board Member La Fortune.
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Brings us to item 12C, which is updated information on immunization laws. Superintendent Ray.
Just an update on the fact that as we know, on September 1 of this year, students were required to have a set amount of immunizations done in order to attend school. There has been a 90-day window to have your child immunized if you provide written assurance that the child will be immunized in that time period. So that will be a procedure that we use on the school committee side to say that we need to have assurance that you're going to be immunized so that you can register your child for school. And that is one of the most recent changes. More of an update, nothing to vote on.
Thank you, Superintendent Ray. Any questions? No questions. Moving on to item 12D, current student enrollment memo. Superintendent Ray.
So just wanted to put out to you guys that if you look at what our enrollments are at this point in time, we pre-K through eight are expecting 1853, which is only slightly lower than 1859 from October of 2019. So we are watching those numbers very carefully. We have a spreadsheet going that says this is what a classroom has, this is how many kids. We want to keep those numbers under 20 in all situations if possible. 18 is actually the target. Now in that number, there could be kiddos who have, are not living in Saco anymore, but just haven't contacted the school. That, that tends to happen every fall. I suspect that Stacy and the secretary's got a million of requests in the last week of kids going in and out. So that's a very fluid number, but one that we want to be careful of. We have stopped accepting any superintendent's agreements for transfers in at the elementary level because I'm just worried about the size of those classrooms. And we will continue to update this and watch this because if class sizes got too much bigger, we would have to look at alternative space and additional staff if we needed to keep those numbers down. But today we're good.
Thank you, Superintendent Ray. Any questions? Moving on to item 12E, fiscal year 2021 end of year balance. Superintendent Ray.
So this is an outline of your end of the year balance of where we finish the year as a school department. In this situation, we ended the year on the expenditure side, $234,000 to the positive. We also had excess revenue of $76,000. So the bottom line is that when we ended the budget for the year, there is a excess revenue of 300, revenue and expenditure of $310,000. That money will be used as carryover that could be applied to the next school budget cycle. As we know from a couple of weeks ago, we had talked about what would happen with the additional subsidy that comes in from the state during, from the ED 279. And that subsidy will be applied to the deficit as when you started the year, we were in the hole $995,000. And so we can use that additional subsidy to pay back the city. We still have the $310,000 of how we would start the next year's budget. And so this puts us in a place where from year, we're clear of debt and we know that we're in the positive moving forward.
Thank you, Superintendent Ray. Any questions? Seeing no questions, moving on to item F. 12F, a board member resignation. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member La Fortune.
I move we accept the resignation of Arthur Tardif, Ward five, school board representative. With thanks and appreciation for his service.
Motion's been made by school board member La Fortune. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by school board member Johnston to accept the resignation of school board member Tardif. Any discussion? School Board Member La Fortune.
Yeah, I just would like to give a personal thank you to Arthur for his service to Saco, not only as a school board member, but for many, many years, a counselor, a member of the police department. He's been a fixture since before I was born in Saco and he will be missed. And I'm quite sure that this is not how he wanted to end his tenure on the school board. But we hope that he does well and, and whatever comes next for him. But thank you, Arthur.
Thank you. School Board Member Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say that Art Tardif has given a lot of time, energy, and years to the city of Saco, both on council, again, as Kevin mentioned, for a long, long time, and also on the school board. I have known him a long time and I really do appreciate his dedication to, to making city government in Saco, you know, good for all of us. He's definitely put his time in and made his opinions known. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. School Board Member Shay.
I do echo what they've said, but I also want to say that I don't think anyone's commitment to public service has been matched like it has been with Art and I do wish him the best.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, school board member Shay.
Yes.
School Board Member Preble.
Yes.
School Board Member Richard.
Yes.
School Board Member La Fortune.
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston.
Yes.
The motion passes five zero. Brings us, item 12G, which was added on, and that is a motion to allow superintendent to accept a security access bid. Superintendent Ray, do you want to give a little background on this and then maybe we'll hear a motion?
Yes. One of the things that we looked at as we've kind of examined the school department is that our school's central office, pre-K center, pretty much everything's done by the regular key. And over the years, keys get lost, they get changed, people leave the district, people come and go. And I think you have the situation where you can, over time, have a lot of, a lot of keys out there to our buildings. And so one of the things that we are looking at to use some of the federal ESAR funds for would be to improve the security and safety of our schools and have a key card swipe system into all of our buildings. We feel that that's something that's very important. If a staff member leaves, it can be quickly turned off. If we want to have designated times that the school buildings are available for certain staff members, you can build that into a system. And we are in the process of accepting bids to make sure that we have that available for our students.
Thank you. Is there a motion? School Board Member Shay.
Yes, I move that we approve allowing the superintendent to accept the lowest bid for the security access system for all of our Saco schools.
Motion's been made by school board member Shay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by school board member Johnston. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member La Fortune.
Just a clarifying question. Have we received any bids yet? And if so, how many are we looking at?
We've had, one bid has been received and we're waiting for another company to process their estimates.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Roll call vote on the motion. School Board Member Shay.
Yes.
School Board Member Preble.
Yes.
School Board Member Richard.
Yes.
School Board Member La Fortune.
Yes.
School Board Member Truman.
I want to say yes, but should I abstain since I wasn't here for the conversation? Probably, yeah, I'll abstain.
Thank you. And school board member Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero with one abstention. That brings us to item 13 of the agenda. There is no other information on this, but I'll ask the question. Is there other information? School Board Member Shay.
Yes, I do have something that I'd like to read. Give me a moment to get to my screen here. Superintendent Ray and Chair La Fortune, due to some unanticipated and deeply personal circumstances, I am resigning as finance chair and school board representative of Ward one effective September 30, September 3, 2021. I regret not being able to fully serve my elected time for Ward one and I am deeply sorry to my Ward one neighbors. However, my safety and privacy, as well as that of my children, is paramount at this time. To the leadership team, the teachers, the bus drivers, the janitors, the secretaries, the nurses, and the ed techs, thank you so much for your time in answering my questions and collaborating with us on the board in order to provide the students of Saco the best education possible during a global pandemic. But more importantly, thank you for doing what you do every day. You give your all and it shows. To the parents who have reached out to me during my tenure, thank you for sharing your concerns and perspective. I value these conversations, even if we did not see eye to eye on a resolution. It cannot be denied that parents and those on this board are all looking for the best student-first resolution to any problem. To those who chose to spread gossip instead of knowing the facts, I want you to know and understand that your actions put my children's safety in jeopardy. You do not even know close to the entire situation and instead of reaching out to me, you chose to spread gossip and at one point, even with my child within earshot. I hope that your own children never have to experience what my children have been put through because of your sophomoric actions. And to those in the Saco elected positions, there's a quote by Maya Angelou that I often cite to my own children. Do the best you can until you know better. And then when you know better, do better. You had an opportunity to protect the safety of a family and you chose not to, you chose to follow gossip instead. You now know better, do better, be better. But finally, I want to thank my fellow board members and Superintendent Ray for their unwavering support and friendship over the last year. My children and I especially appreciate it as we move through a difficult part of our life's journey. We all started on this board as strangers, but we've become cherished friends and I thank that more than words can express. Please know how difficult this is for me to resign and I've truly enjoyed being on the school board and I'm proud of the contributions that I have made. But thank you all for allowing me this time to serve and thank you for respecting my children and my privacy during this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Shay. Excuse me, school board member Shay. Any other information?
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member Richard.
I'd just like to thank school board member Shay. She's made an incredible contribution to this board in the time that she served and Ward one's going to be hard pressed to, to find someone to fill her shoes. So sincerely, thank you for everything.
And if.
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member Johnston.
I want to concur and say that I think that school board member Shay has done a great job. She's dug right in as soon as she got on the board, went, learned the ropes, has contributed a great deal. And I just wanted to say thank you, Christina, for delivering that information to us and for participating for the length of time that you were able to.
School Board Member La Fortune.
I just wanted to say also a personal thank you for your service to the board. I just wanted to say also a personal thank you for your service to the board. It's, you really did dive straight in and hit the ground running. And I think the, the last year and a half or so has, has seen a turnaround in the board, primarily because you and others stepped up at a time that was difficult for the school board and served. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member Truman?
I just wanted to also thank Christina. I, I appreciated her insight and her tough questions and really making sure she got all the details that she needed. And I really want to thank her for all of her time on the board and for all of her great questions. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member Preble?
Everything's already been said, but I'm just going to echo all of those sentiments. We really are going to miss you.
Thank you. With that, is there any other information? Okay, moving on to item 14. There are two motions to enter into executive session. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member LaFortune?
I'm going to skip over A as I don't believe that it's, there's any need to have that discussion at this point, based on some information that came out earlier. And I'm going to go straight to the other one, which is I move to enter executive session for the purpose of discussion of legal rights and duties. Oops. Enter executive session for the purpose of labor contract negotiations pursuant to one MRS A 405 6D with action.
Second.
School Board Member Shay was the second on that. Any discussion on entering executive session for labor contract negotiations? Roll call vote. School Board Member Shay?
Yes.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richard?
Yes.
School Board Member LaFortune?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Executive session will be downstairs in the conference room. Executive session will be downstairs in the conference room.[198.96][199.12]1565-6000 Executive session will be downstairs in the conference room.[198.96][199.12]1565-6000 Session. Session.
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member LaFortune?
I move we exit executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by School Board Member Johnston. Any discussion on exiting executive session? Roll call vote, School Board Member Shay?
Yes.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richard?
Yes.
School Board Member LaFortune?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Is there a report from executive session?
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member LaFortune?
I move we accept the contract with non-instructional staff.
Motion's been made by School Board Member LaFortune to accept the contract with the school instructional staff. Is there a second?
I have a question. Is that, is it school instructional staff?
I said non-instructional.
Non-instructional.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard instructional. Okay. I was a little confused. Apologize.
Is there a second to the School Board LaFortune's motion? School Board Member Johnston? Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I just want to say that it was great to be on this negotiation team and to work with the union representatives. Both sides really took this seriously and worked very hard and I'm glad that we came up to an agreement.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, School Board Member Shay?
Yes.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richard?
Yes.
School Board Member LaFortune?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member Shay?
I motion to adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by School Board Member Truman. Any discussion? Roll call to adjourn. School Board Member Shay?
Yes.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richard?
Yes.
School Board Member LaFortune?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to adjourn at 5:55 PM. Thank you very much everyone. Have a wonderful evening.